Ms. Haynes, would you call the role please?
Yes. Ms. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yeah.
Ms. Sullivan?
Ms. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Mr. Perrin had some business that he had to take care of this evening with his job. He told me he would not be able to attend. He might come in late, but he didn't think.
And Mr. Scormeau?
Here. Thank you. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Anyone would please rise if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. You have no visitors this evening?
No.
So write the public comment. Write your public comment. We have minutes. We have two minutes, and if we could take them separately, please. Minutes from April 13th, 2015, motion to approve.
Do you need a second? Okay.
President Gill, seconds?
No, I move. Oh, did you just move?
Oh, I'm sorry. I made the motion. That's why I didn't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, second. I'm sorry. Any questions or comments on the April 13th minutes? Will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Ms. Haynes, I wasn't here, I'm abstaining. Next is April 27th, 2015. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sharkey, second by President Gill. Any questions or comments on the April 27th? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Mrs. Polino abstains. Curriculum.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have Mr. Woods here. We'd like to have a -- at each meeting, we'd like to just update you on various parts of the curriculum. So tonight, Mr. Woods is going to bring you up to speed on a couple of things that they're doing in the science area at the Cummings and, I believe, at the high school level. Mr. Woods?
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for having me here tonight. Couple of things. I actually touched one at the Fort Banks, too, that I brought to the superintendent about.
Right.
The Fort Banks Writing Program for our K-2 students is actually underway, a revision of our writing program at the K-2 level. We are working with a consultant at the building designing a program that will be compatible with the Writer's Workshop they're using at the Arthur T. Cummings School. The feeling was, they didn't want to go Writer's Workshop, complete buy-in. They didn't feel it was completely age-appropriate. So what we've done is we've brought someone in who has many years of experience, who is helping them develop a program which will blend seamlessly back into the program when they get to grade three. Things they're taking into consideration are age and skill readiness of their students and certain other constraints they felt they had at the Fort Banks School. So they're working on that, and that should be ready to roll out partially in grades K-2 for September. In the science area, we're doing a couple of different things. One of the things we're looking at is for our 3, 4, and 5, grades 3, 4, and 5 program, is program called STEM Scopes. STEM Scopes comes out of Rice University. It's an ongoing project now of the Five District Partnership. What we're planning to do this summer is write the year-long plans for grades 3, 4, and 5, and then next year, hopefully, implement grades 3 and 4. The reason they didn't feel they wanted to implement grade 5 next year was because that is an MCAS test year, and they didn't want to just, like, drop this on those fifth graders where it's a brand-new program. So the 3 and 4 will hopefully roll that out. It's based on research done at Rice University on a program, and they use the acronym IDEA, I-D-E-A, and not the IDEA that we're all probably familiar with. But this one is illuminate, do, expand, and assess. And some of the things they do on the illuminate is very well-laid out. I like this program a lot because it's very succinct, it's very structured for the teachers and the students. The idea, they set up activity where they assess students' prior knowledge, there's an activity where they do a hook to bring the kids into the activity. Then there's a do, and the do is either some form of a lab, an activity, a project-based learning project. The expand is really kind of neat, and the teachers are very excited about the expand portion of it because it brings it, and it's got Lexile readings where the students can link the science to their ELA. It's got math extensions where they can bring the math into it. It's got ELL extensions where we can bring in to our ELL learners. So it's got a ton of extensions that are great. The assess portion of it, it's in three phases. There's a multiple-choice assessment, there's an open-response assessment, and there's what's called a CER assessment, which is claims, evidence, reasoning, which is a whole writing piece. It's one of the latest movements in science right now. In fact, it's a movement, more than public schools is going across the district in every aspect next year, looking at claims, evidence, and reasoning. Now, if a student writes something, they make a claim, they have to follow up, what evidence made you make that claim, and then the reasoning behind why they think that. So it's a whole writing process. The good part of it is, it's actually very, very, very cost-effective. The program runs about $5.25 a student for a year, for one year. What we hope to do is that, and if you only, if you talk about your grades 3 and 4 students, you're talking about approximately 300 students, so you're talking about a $1,500 investment in a science program. One of the other things we'd be looking to do, and I've discussed this with the superintendent, the other thing I really liked about all of the materials involved in this are very, very, I wanted to say Michael's Home Depot products, which means for an additional investment of another $1,500 for supplies, we can have classroom materials for the kids. There aren't a lot of exotics that you need to find and buy. So I thought that would really work out well. This will lead us into our middle school program, which is something called CPUP. We're loaded with acronyms, but CPUP, Science Education for Public Understanding Program. CPUP is being promoted through LabAids. LabAids has been around forever. Some of you, when you went to school, probably had LabAids kits, and they used to market themselves as all kit-driven. CPUP is a different way of looking at it. CPUP is, every unit uses personal and social issues to provide thematic continuity for students' investigations and observations. In other words, they'll talk about, the question they'll ask the students at the beginning of the thing is, they'll give a scenario. There's been an oil spill in the Gulf, and they'll use that to go into a whole study of the chemistry behind it and the environmental impacts behind it. So they try to frame everything in a real-world reference, trying to make it a little more holistic for the kids. So there again, that's, it's, we're trying to roll that out in grade 6 for next year, for 2015, '16. Some people ask, why aren't we rolling it out 6, 7, and 8? It makes a lot of sense, given the fact that the MCAS test is not going to change from what I heard from the state, what everyone's been told from the state, until the spring of 2018. So if you roll it out to your grade 6 in 15, '16, they would have had 15, '16, '16, '17, '17, '18, a three-year, those students would have had a three-year impact when they take the new MCAS exam. To change up your 7th and 8th grade now, there's mixed feelings on it, but actually, CPUP isn't actually even ready to roll that out to 7 and 8 yet. They're still adapting it to the next-generation science standards, and they're doing the work necessary for that. So that is my update on where we stand as far as curriculum goes at this point. Obviously, we're still looking at the math program, we're looking at the Go Math, we're looking at Ten Marks. We've got a lot of irons in the fire. A lot of this is going to be, and it's a timely issue, but a lot of this will be budget-driven as far as how much progress we can make. Aside from curriculum, I just want to take this moment while I have the floor to also announce that one of our teachers, Chris Farnsworth over at the Cummings School, 7th grade science teacher, was nominated by Amy Marconi, our lead teacher in science, for the North Shore Science Supervisors Association Exemplary Teacher Award.
Oh, that's wonderful.
He is one of eight awardees that will get recognized at a banquet at Danversport Yard Club on May 14th, 2015. And where I preside as president of the NSA, I will be there, so I will give you an update as far as how the festivities went that evening.
Frank, what's the title of that again? The title of the award?
It's the Exemplary Science Teacher Award, and it's given through the North Shore Science Supervisors Association.
Thank you.
A lot of S's.
Yes, sir. Just to put on the back burner, can we start getting together summer packet ideas ready for, you know, K through 12 or K through 11? Would like to see what they might be, you know, what we're going to hand out and give out to the kids, or expectations. Thank you.
Frank, I just have a few questions. On the writing program, is it still based, I'm just looking at the old John Collins where there's rubrics and whatever, it's still on that same?
It's all, there'll be rubrics, there will be, you know, central questions, there will be writing prompts. As you know, the Writer's Workshop is a little bit more open-ended.
Yes.
About, not the structure, but the what you write about. It tries to lead into student interest. We're going to keep it, I think this was part of the hang-up at the Fort School, at the Fort Banks, was they wanted to keep it a little bit more structured than a full Writer's Workshop program.
Yeah.
But there was no mistaking, everyone in the room, on the writing committee and Mrs. Pearson and myself, were all in agreement that whatever we develop will model that Writer's Workshop program.
Okay.
In its functionality, in its, you know, we want to start using the vocabulary with the K-2 students.
Right.
We want to kind of wean them into it.
Yes.
So that when they get to grade 3, they're ready to hit the ground with it.
Okay. And if I can go to science?
Sure.
Are we going, is it, I see that the materials, I understand the materials, and also the materials to do the experiments with, I understand that. Are there any additional books? Will we still stay with the same curriculum as when it's being taught and?
Okay, I should have mentioned that. The 5DP is rolling out a year-long plan. What we're doing is, there are probably, approximately, don't hold me to the number exactly, but approximately 15 of these scopes.
Okay.
Per grade level.
Okay.
The nice thing about, I'll give you a little, just a quick history, is up until now, we had strands in science that went K-2, 3-5, 6-8, and then it finally broke down into biology, chemistry, et cetera. The state in its infinite wisdom has finally said, we're going to follow the math people, and we're going to say, these are your standards for grades 1, grade 2, grade 3. They've broken it all down.
Okay.
So approximately 15 scopes per NGSS standard.
Okay.
Or per grade. What we're going to do is, we know that not every district, not every school, not every classroom teaches the same amount of science. We're not literacy, science is not literacy, science is not math. I wish it was. I wish we had the time in the day to say, everyone is going to get an hour of science. We don't have that luxury. So what we did was, a scope, an average scope, they said should take a class of approximately a week and a half to two weeks to complete. So what we said, when we talked about this, was if we choose 10 power scopes, 10 that you need to hit in grades 3, 4, 5, and then we're going to also include approximately five scopes that, if you can get above and beyond that, fabulous, but we're going to hopefully hit a core of information in 10, given that we have approximately, I know we like to say we have a 40-school week here, but you really can only plan curriculum for about 34 of it, you know? Given half weeks and days and here and there. So we're hoping that if we can get those 10, given that not everybody has a full 45-minute clock or even has it every day, that's what our goal was.
Okay. And if I can just ask you a question on, I'm hearing that the MCAS will continue until 2018. So Frank, if I can just ask the superintendent, John, does that mean that we have to vote again whether we're going to stick?
No, that's, for science, I believe it was never changing.
Okay.
Science was always staying MCAS.
Okay.
It's the, and in regards to the Park versus MCAS and all of that, nothing has come down yet on.
Nothing. Okay. That's what I was going to ask, Frank.
There's a huge battle going on currently.
Yeah. The next question, I mean, from what I'm reading, it seems that a lot of the school systems are distancing themselves from the park. I'm not saying, you know, that that's going to be the path.
A lot of the suburban, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, a lot of suburban rural communities are distancing themselves in going with MCAS. A lot of urban have moved toward the park.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I'm just going to hit Chris Farnsworth right now. When you get a teacher that receives an award like that, it has to be that they love what they're doing, and Chris Farnsworth loves science. He loves children, but he loves his science, and I think that shows, so congratulations.
Just to touch upon one major change, though, when you brought up the MCAS, with the new Massachusetts, I guess, the newly-to-be-adopted standards in science, because they, we never know when they're actually going to take adoption, but one thing I will tell you is, they have gone back to putting in the actions of science. So in other words, a standard will now say, students will be able to model X, Y, and Z. Students will be able to, you know, perform an experiment to prove something. And it's written, the action verbs of science have been written right back into the standards.
Into, that's good. Because it helps the kids to understand what you're asking them to do.
It absolutely does. What had happened was, there was a dichotomy going on of, MCAS was, it looked like a test you could have taken in 1952. It was just a battery of memorized facts, and yet, science was saying, they need to know, they need to know the practices of science and the experimentation and the application and the work behind it, but the test wasn't, the MCAS test wasn't testing that, and our standards weren't really modeling it.
Okay.
So it's kind of brought it back, brought it back to where it needs to be.
Okay. That's great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Extra Subcommittee Reports. And I ask Mrs. Sharkey if she'll report on the Shore Collaborative.
Yes. We had a short collaborative meeting at the Shore Educational Collaborative School on April 14th. I'm the, our school committee's rep, so Chris, I was there. All of our Board of Directors was there, and I just want to, so people know, there are probably, in the Board of Directors, there's probably 10 or 12 Board of Directors in addition to having a director and assistant director. Topics covered were, just to say that the present finances are very stable. We discussed the draft of the 2016 budget and the reductions that may need to occur. We also talked that there will be an increase in tuition for all the district members, and also changes in members of the Shore. There were no votes taken, and there were no documents used during the meeting. I'm going to ask Gary, there was one portion that everyone who still belongs to the Shore, and that includes 2, 4, 6, 8, 9 schools, systems, that there are 3 who are no longer going to be part of the vocational. So there has to be a vote done on that with the acceptance that we are going to change. Boston, Waltham, and Northeast Vocational have decided not to be members of Shore Collaborative anymore. So pretty basically, they're just asking, that's just effective, the membership of Shore.
Membership of Shore, as of the effective date of this agreement, includes the school committees from the following districts. Cambridge Public Schools, Chelsea Public Schools, Everett Public Schools, Mala Public Schools, Medford Public Schools, Revere Public Schools, Saugus Public Schools, Somerville Public Schools, and Winthrop Public Schools. And as Mrs. Sharkey said, Boston, Waltham, and Northeast Vocational decided not to join. And we, as a school committee, as a school district, utilizing the Shore Collaborative, must vote to accept this change. Mrs. Polino.
I just have a question. How does that affect the kids from Winthrop that go to Northeast Vocational? Would they, how's it affect?
Okay. Right now, Melissa, I'm just going, I didn't know somebody might ask that question. I looked up in the records that I have, and right now, we don't even have one child, or if we do, it's one child that they do. So they must be using another collaborative program close to the vocational school, but as you said, that's not to say that we won't have other children as time moves on that won't be part of. I know that Shore is anticipating of creating their own vocational component within the Shore program itself, total program. So I think that's a watch-and-see, but I think that that's an important question to ask. Where would one of our children who may need it, a lot of times, it's emotional or behavioral. It's not, as you know, it's not necessarily academic. And if that child might need a short-term educational stay at the Shore or whatever component, we do need to find out where that child would go. So that's a good question. Good question.
It's an interesting question, because if they're a Winthrop student who's going to the vocational, but yet, we're a member of Shore, and we would, and they would have to send that, is it our?
Responsibility.
It's our responsibility, so therefore, we would still be a member, so the cost
Maybe that's, yeah.
Would have to either come from us at that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's probably why Northeast has probably pulled out of it, because all their schools, our towns are members.
That's a good point, Sean.
Makes no sense for them to.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve this change. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Gill. Any questions or comments? If you take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, if unanimous.
Right. And you get to sign.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey.
You have to sign.
I have to sign as the chairperson? Okay. Next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No.
Thank you.
That's what I tried to.
Well, I have a few items I just want to report about. One is, first of all, is the budget. You should have all received from me, I sent you a copy online, the Town Manager's Budget Proposal. The school department's budget proposal is $17,400,016 at this time, which is a reduction of $565,000 from our original amount that we are, that the school committee had requested. I know that there's a budget subcommittee meeting that will be happening next Tuesday. I have met with my principals, curriculum director, special education director, to review the current proposed budget and to take a look at what those reductions would be, and then propose those. Hopefully, we should have a budget proposal for you by the 12th to take a look at it for the subcommittee to review what we believe would work. Currently, we, our goal right now is to make the reductions that we have, but not, you know, try our best to keep the line items that are in where the negotiations line item is as well, so that when you go to negotiate, there is money in those line items. So that's where we're currently at. Are we getting close? We're not there yet, but we're getting close. And of course, the other thing is, is to not have any layoffs. The only layoff that would happen this year would be somebody was not renewed due to performance, but not because of budget cut. So that's, currently, we're working on that.
Go ahead, Mr. Sharkey.
Mr. Superintendent, my concern is, is that, and just to let our, especially our school parent community, that we really needed to get the money that we needed, that we requested. We did request a large amount of money. It was just a smidgen over $1 million. And as the superintendent said, we got $565,000. And though there may not be any, hopefully, any layoffs, it may come to a point, and I'm not saying it is, but potentially, that some of our fees and things like that could potentially be affected. I'm not saying they will be, I'm just saying there's a possibility. As the superintendent said, this is also a negotiating year, and we need to take that into consideration. Of course, our children's needs come first, but also, we need to address also our teachers and staff as far as their salaries are concerned. And as we know, our teacher salaries are at the bottom of this whole entire state of Massachusetts. I think we're at the bottom 2% or 5%. So whatever raise we are able to get, we need to try the best of our ability to get for our teachers as well as providing. And if I may say, that this budget that was put together by our leadership team, which includes John and Susan and our principals, was the best constructed budget I have ever seen in all the years that I've been in the system. It was articulate, it came right to the point, and we weren't talking about papers and pencils. And to receive such, and less of a budget that we needed, understanding that we only have so much revenue, and, but there are some places that hopefully, I'll trap Tim and Jim to maybe just look a little deeper for us, if they can. So I do appreciate the money that we got, but it's so significantly less than what we need, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Sir.
So a couple other items that have been going on. One, you may remember that we had the large donation for the scholarship. And so this year, for the Paul and Norma Facella Scholarship, we've had 56 students who applied. And we, last week, we held our first essay, and I'm proud to tell you, the 54 out of the 56 students showed up at 7:00 in the morning.
Wow.
And took the essay question. They were given the question that day, and so there was no, you know, they got a chance to do it. It was kind of, we mirrored the MCAS model. They did a rough draft, they came up. We labeled their final exam with their student ID so that the folks that read them have no clue who's who, and at that point, they've been submitted. So all of those documents have been in, and there was not one person out of the, I met with each person who applied for it, all 56 students, to go through every single thing that they needed to have. And so there's no one that can say that they didn't know what they needed to have in there, so that's, we wanted to make sure that's set. And Mr. Crombie and I, even though we're on the scholarship committee, we do not have a vote in, we've abstained ourselves from the selection of those scholarships. Not to put aside all the other scholarships that are coming, too, and the students at the high school had till last Friday where they've put in for those. So there's multiple, multiple scholarships that are going to be coming out this year. So it's going to be a very exciting end of the year. Speaking of the beginning of the starts to the end of the year, May 14th, you should have all received a letter by the senior, or by the parent, by the high school guidance counselor department, that there are the 10% awards.
Yeah.
Is on May 14th. It's not here, it's at the Cottage Park Yard Club. So if you can attend, it'd be great to have you there, and that will be happening. The high school drama production is this Wednesday. It opens actually Wednesday night. I was wrong, I kept thinking it was Thursday night, so I wanted to make sure people understand that. It's Wednesday, Thursday, and then Saturday due to confirmation. They have to move one of their shows to the Saturday night. There's no show on Friday. And that is Legally Blonde. And a special congratulations goes out to our middle school, well, we call it middle school, but the Arthur T. Cummings Drama Club, who last Saturday performed in the state competition and received a gold medal.
Wow. Oh, that's.
And multiple, multiple awards, not only here again, not only for their show, but they received for lighting, costume, Stage Managers Award. The Stage Managers Award, I believe, went to Nora Grimes', daughter. Makes sense, right? You know, that organization. And Jason Preble was the lighting design award.
Wow.
And then there were other students who received acting awards. So they've, you know, they really have taken on that area. One area that is of concern, as you will hear as we're moving forward, is our, the last time I was here, I talked about the IT department and how we were looking at possibly outside and inside. and how we were looking at possibly outside and inside and all of that. Well, since then, and I will read that to you in a second, Mr. Ruwako has moved, he is leaving us. He's going over to Linfield. And so our department will be, we are now at that point where we need to take a real good look at which direction do we want to go in. And today, I met with every department of the town, with the town manager for feedback. On Wednesday, we're meeting with Mr. Ruwako and his team to first of all, make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row for when he leaves and in case there's any issues, we know what we're doing on that. And the second part is, is we are contemplating, looking at ways of how to either restructure it or continue in the direction that we have been in. But remember that this is one of those areas which is, we are under consolidation on. So, and it's a, it's a big job for one person. So we're taking a look at all of that. But just wanted you to be aware that that's, that's the next. It seems this year, we've kind of gone from one position to another position. I'm getting really good at knowing all these positions. So, but the IT, let's see. I also want to make sure that I congratulate Mr. Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth works his, you know, tail off as well as all our other teachers. But he has a special love for the science. He has a special love for robotics. And he loves what he does, and very deserving of this award. So that was a nice surprise today to see that come down on our end. Let's see, I think there's multiple, multiple things happening as we get towards now, over the next month and a half of stuff. My main, primary focus, as I told you earlier when we started, is going to be working on this budget, presenting that on the 12th to the subcommittee and moving forward on that. So. And last thing, I'll report it. You saw that the school, the new building, the main street in front of the new building is shut down. So you can no longer go in there, which means that the next time they open that, which will be January first, hopefully, 2016, that whole front of the building will have been completed. But as you can see, there's great progress that's going on right now. We had a wonderful ceremony last week with the topping off ceremony at the high school, middle school, high school construction site. So on budget, on time, on target. So if there are no questions, I'll go into personnel.
If I could just say, one question I get asked more than any other is, when will the school be completed? I believe it is July 2016.
Correct.
We will open it September 2016. So those students are in the fourth grade now. Will be going into the sixth grade at the Payson Street Middle School.
Right. So the current sophomores should be our first senior class there. And I've made that pledge to them, so we're getting there. Under personnel, I have two resignations. Please accept this letter as a notice of my resignation as employee of the Arthur T. Cummings School. I will not be returning in the fall to my current position as special education teacher of the PDD classroom. My resignation date will be the last day of school. I'm moving to New York City this summer. And although I have not yet found a new position, I plan to continue my teaching career there. I want to thank you for providing me the opportunity to teach and grow with the Winthrop Public School Districts. I feel privileged to have worked in such an encouraging environment surrounded by talented educators. Best, Kristen Sinclair. Kristen was one of our PDD teachers at the Cummings School, and she will be very missed.
She's an excellent teacher.
And then here, Mr. Masero, please accept this letter as formal notification that I'm resigning my position as Director of Technology with the Winthrop Public School System. My last day will be May eighth, 2015. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work in this position for the past thirteen years. I've greatly enjoyed and appreciated the opportunities I've had here in Winthrop along with all the experiences I've gained. During my last few weeks, I'll do everything possible to wrap up my duties and train other IT staff. Please let me know if there's anything else I can do to help during this transition. Wish you all continued success and I hope to stay in touch in the future. Sincerely, Vincent Ruwako. I always forget what the R stands for at the beginning. Ralph, Ralph, there you go. I would just like to say a couple of things. You know, Vincent has been in the district for thirteen years. Vincent has taken us to a point where we, you know, he went from just the tech director of the school department to being the town IT director. And Vincent has, you know, shown a lot of compassion for Winthrop Public Schools, and we wish him the best as he moves on to Linfield.
I'd also like to just say, we're really going to miss Vinnie. Vinnie was our go-to person. He always kept an open door for us. Whatever we needed, Vinnie tried to do his best to get it done for us. And I just wish him the very, very best. I hope Linfield recognizes what, how fortunate they are to get a person like Vinnie. So good luck.
And the only other posting we had is that we're, we've posted a sub ESP position for the high school. That's it from the personnel.
Thanks.
I would like to acknowledge, the superintendent had mentioned about Chrissy, our PDD person from the Cummings School. That's a very difficult position, the PDD, working with our young children. And I have to tell you, she's an exceptional teacher in that area. And I'm sad to see her go, but I am happy to see her for whatever her next goal is and to wish her good luck. But we will miss having a gifted teacher as Chrissy.
Mr. Superintendent?
I'm sorry, I meant to say, one, one thing that's very important is the Winthrop Teachers Association has had a change in leadership. Adam Sullivan is now the new president of the Winthrop Teachers Association. I'd like to congratulate Adam. The vice president, I believe, is Kristen Reynolds. The secretary is Ellen Baxter, and the treasurer is Maria Salvagio. So they are now the new board. I wanted to congratulate them. But I also wanted to give special thanks to Pauline Boyachin for the work that she did as the president of the Teachers Association. It was a joy for me to work with her the past four years, and I look forward to working with Adam.
It's a difficult position, and I wish her well myself.
I think you know very well how difficult it is. You were president of the WTA.
Yes, yes. And happy to be.
Next item is the warrant, SVW one-five-dash-one-seven, the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Motion by President Gill.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. No relation to Adam Sullivan?
No relation.
No relation to Adam Sullivan?
Good point.
Okay. At least not for the last thousand years, maybe. Maybe, maybe back then. Any questions or comments on the warrant? We'll vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, unanimous? Next is the payroll warrant. The payroll warrant is dated February twenty-fifth, 2015, in the amount of five hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and zero cents. Motion by President Gill to approve. Second by Mrs. Sharkey. Questions or comments on the payroll warrant? We'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Next, the building and grounds. And if there are no objections, we can take them all at once. We have the class of 2018 Bubble Soccer. Thought about making an amendment requiring that I be there, but it sounds like a lot of fun to me. Parks and Rec guitar lessons, Parks and Rec Legos class, Special Olympics Track and Field, Special Olympics Track and Field. There's ones on Sundays, ones on Saturdays. The, and the Winthrop Lacrosse. Who has listed their dates in their permit?
Motion to make, take all.
Motion by President Gill to approve all at once.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions or comments on any of the use of buildings and grounds? We'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Next is unfinished business. We have the second reading of the background checks policy, which is only four pages long. I'm happy to start reading that if you would like, or you may make a motion to waive the second reading.
Motion to waive the second reading.
Motion by President Gill to waive the second reading. No need to make a second. If there's no second, I will proceed to read all four pages. There's no second. You want me to read this?
No.
Second, second.
Oh, sorry.
Second by Ms. Sullivan.
You're just confusing me.
I was just going to get started. Any questions or comments on the motion? If not, we will vote to, this will be to waive the second reading of the background checks policy. What?
And adopt.
And adopt.
Will we do both at once? Do we have to do both separately?
They can do it separately.
Separately?
Separately, okay. This is just to waive the second reading. And there are, no comments or questions at this time? We'll vote, all in favor of waiving the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I oppose. Motion is passed, we waive the second reading. Oh, I'm sorry, are there any abstentions? No abstentions, very good. Next is to approve the... Okay. Next is the second reading. We're not going to vote on, I'm sorry, we're not going to vote on approving it. We'll do that at the next school committee meeting. Next is the second reading of the student vacation extended leave makeup policy. That's just short. I'm sure President Gill makes a motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
Mrs. Sharkey, who I thought was my friend, has seconded it. Any questions or comments on waiving the second reading of the student vacation and extended leave makeup policy? Questions or comments? We'll vote on waiving the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Ms. Haynes, if you would put both of those on for a vote at our next school committee meeting, please. Thank you. Next is new business. We have a request to approve the installation of a memorial bench for Sabrina Feudo at the Arthur T. Cummings School. I've spoken with Principal Herity about this. He has two areas in mind. One would be out in the, I believe, he said, one would be out in the semicircle towards the fire station. But he tends to favor, I believe, in the circle on the Herman Street side, where there are other benches and where students often go out to play. It's by the front door on Herman Street. Makes sense. It is, as I understand it, to be a granite bench. Quite beautiful. And Mr. Calla of our DPW has said that his staff will do the labor. They will pour the cement, they will put the bench in as soon as it is ready. So we thank Mr. Calla and his staff for that. And to the hundreds of students and citizens who have contributed to this bench. It is a beautiful thing. I'll make a motion to approve, approving the installation of the bench.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions or comments? We will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Next is school choice. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about school choice?
I can just speak for a second. We do not have Ms. O'Connell here tonight, and that's in my end. But we have, currently, we have ten students in school choice. We've dropped down from twenty-five in the past. And I think these past, these, these two years, we thought we might take a little dip here or there because of the construction and all of that. It is best for us, if we wish to continue to allow students to come from other districts, we do need to vote to approve that. And we should have that approved by June first. I'll be happy to have Ms. O'Connell here with numbers and everything for you for the May eighteenth meeting.
That would be great, Mr. O'Connell.
From what I understand, school choice, we've, the school committee has allowed by vote up to ten per grade to accept.
In the past.
And it was my understanding, it was basically up to the principal to screen the applicants.
It's a lottery, I believe.
It's, it's, you can't refuse if there's an open spot. If there are more than some that come in, then there's ways that you have to do it.
I was also in depression, she could screen the students. If you get a student that has just a horrendous behavioral problem, we can say, you know, not going to work.
You, you can, there are, I, I'd rather have Ms. O'Connell talk about the specifics on it. But there are certain things that you, you can't just turn around and say, I'm going to take this one and not that person. You can't discriminate against anybody on, on certain, on things, whether or not they have special ed services or other services or various things like that. So it's just a matter of making sure. We do screen them. I know that Ms. O'Connell will meet with students and Mr., the principal would currently meet with students as part of the process of them coming into the school. But I would have to further know what the rules are as well as whether or not we have the right to say yes or no on that.
What was our international numbers?
The international is different. The international, how many numbers this year in international was? I want to say close to fifteen was the international students. That, that one is all screened by the company, and then we do screen that and we choose to say yes or no on, on that. We can say no to a person or not on that. And the other thing, the way the international works too, is that, and we've had some students that if there were situations that they got themselves into that are against their own policy rules, they're immediately taken from the district at no loss to us on that.
I guess what I'm getting to, I mean, school choice has been wonderful for all the years, but this past year, there's just talk out there that recruiting was done for sports. And I thought, well, that can't happen because we screen the students and they need to be coming for academics. But if you're saying there's an open spot and we have to take the student, we did open the door for recruiting, for athletics.
We cannot go out there and, and, and turn around and say, oh, we're going to bring you over here and we're going to do all of that stuff. So there's a very, very, very fine line on all of that.
Well, we can't go out and publicize it, but there's nothing says, conversations can, can be had amongst coaches and...
Right. And I would say that that's, you know, I mean, I, we, we follow, there's a guidelines that we follow under school choice. If, if, if a student or a parent is interested, they need to contact Ms. O'Connell's office and follow through that way on it.
Just sees this loopholes and maybe we need to really...
Well, I think we should take a look at it as the policy.
Look at it again to see if we even want to continue school choice.
Sure, well, that's, that's the key on it. I mean, the school choice is, the school choice, the way I look at it, the school choice was monies that was brought into Winthrop because we needed that revenue in it. Now, over the last couple of years, we've kind of reduced that revenue down. However, we've made up that revenue on the international side.
Yes.
And so that's the question is, if we, maybe we go into that side of it more because there's a lot more things in place and the money comes to us right up front on it, so.
Mrs. Sharkey.
John, how much money do we receive for each child in school choice?
Five thousand dollars you receive for a child. And then if there are other circumstances...
Like a special needs child.
Right, you receive more on that.
So when we were doing twenty-five, we were actually bringing in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Plus, then there was much more, you know, because there are certain classrooms that we have in Winthrop that we have the only type of class in some of the, you know, and, and some of the communities. And so parents feel very comfortable bringing that child to that, which is in our special ed department.
Sure, in our skills.
And so that, right, and that brings in some revenue on that end.
We were bringing in about a hundred and seventy.
A hundred and seventy, because some of those being special needs of ours.
Our student, our school choice is reduced.
Yes, yeah. How, how about for international students? How much money per child do we bring in?
Well, the, an international student, you bring in eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five if they're here the full year. And then it's half of that if they do have to. So we get, majority of our students come for the full year or they come the first half of the year. We get, very rarely do we get a couple of students or, you know, a few we may get at the second half of the year.
Okay, great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Mrs. Polino.
John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna have to. What are the pros and cons of school choice as a district?
Well, the pros is, is that if you are, if you're bringing in students and you have room, then it brings you in revenue because you don't have to, it gives you more money to keep the teachers and the lights, and all of that is the same cost that you would have anywhere else. So that money comes in to help you, allow you to bring more money in. There's no doubt about that. The, the cons of the school choice is that, you know, sometimes you could be bringing in a student that's also going to be more costly for you down the road, too. You know, if that student requires services, that's gonna happen, then you have to cover those services.
Wouldn't it be covered by the district that they're coming out of?
See, I don't, I don't know the full detail on that. That's why I would prefer to have Jen here to talk about that on that. I'm not sure. I think on, I think when you take ownership of that child, you have a cost that goes with that child. Because that special ed services money comes back to you to, that's why we're being reimbursed for that. So in this particular situation, now, if you're talking about whether we'd have to outsource that student, then maybe it would go back to...
Their district.
Their district. But in the case of here, where we bring them into a certain program, we get all of that revenue. That town doesn't get it.
So the pros and cons are purely just financial?
For now, I'd say yes.
So educationally, what are the pros and cons?
The, well, we, we feel that we offer a good system. It's a good system for, for, you know, we have a small, we have smaller schools than some of the communities around us.
How does it help us, though, educationally?
Brings in money to our budget.
Besides financial?
Well, I think also sometimes, we're, we're an urban school, suburban school, sorry, that I think sometimes the kids that we get are maybe from the city, I'm not sure. I haven't, they used to be, I know that, you know, going back in time, we had some city kids that came in. So I think that's a good thing, 'cause I think it does show some diversification. And also, it exposes our kids to some of the things that other children have to contend with in order to get a good education. I think that's one thing that I would say. But I, if you're going to say, does it benefit us academically, like a strength in academics? I think that's a question, that, you know, is questionable. But I think it offers an opportunity for other children to come to our school and be exposed, and vice versa. I know that in the other districts, like Marblehead, they have Metco. So it's not the exact same thing, but it's still doing that same purpose of exposing two groups of children to see what another life is about in another part of the area without going too far. So, I don't know.
President Gill.
We've gotten some pretty typically great kids from the program too, and I think it's, this is conjecture, but I think it's had some positive effect on our MCAS scores. We're not just taking kids that are troubled and taking kids that are having struggling academically. We are, we're bringing in kids that, that being in bed, their parents are in bed. The parents are going the extra mile, bringing the kids to the school, which shows that there's a parent interest that people are claiming is the kind of interest that's in charter schools. So I, I think the, some of the students that we're bringing in are pretty high qualities, not high quality, high level performing students. On the numbers, John, Mr. Moser, the, there's a decrease this year, is there, that you said, or is there none this year?
There was, we, two years ago, we had twenty-five students. Now, some students graduated on in some of the programs.
Right.
Last year, we had thirteen, so there was a decrease right there from that. And we, this year, we have ten.
Thank you.
Add a possible forty.
Mrs. Polino.
I understand from a school committee aspect, it's, it's financial. As a teacher, have we ever thought about maybe surveying the teachers and just seeing if they found any benefits, any pros or cons to having the school choice?
I have not, but I will certainly take a look at it. I do know, as Mr. Gill said, that the majority of our schools, students who come for a school choice, you know, they, they've made a commitment, parents have made a commitment. They drive them here, they get them here, they, they've decided that they wanted, they'd rather go to school in Winthrop than in Boston, or they'd rather go to school in Winthrop than in Revere or Lynn. And so they've made that conscious choice. And I believe academically, those students have done very well, but I don't, you know, I don't look at it out and say, that's a school choice or that, just, I couldn't tell you who is, other than looking at it through, you know, the paper, so.
I mean, we take out the special education population, why can't we take those kids out and see how they do?
We can, we can take a look at it. There's no question about it, we can take a look at it.
Mr. Gordon.
Just to follow up, I'm looking up the tuition rates for the school choice, and it says here, the actual special ed cost for each pupil with an IEP plan is paid in full by the sending district.
Okay. So it doesn't cost you something?
That amount is determined using the same rate methodology for specific services as is used in the special ed circuit breaker program.
Right, okay.
Now, I'm, I'm sorry.
Ms. Sullivan.
Do we allow parents that do not live in Winthrop but teach in Winthrop to have their children come to school here?
We do allow that.
And do teachers take advantage of that? And is that considered school choice or no? That's a different category.
In the younger grades, it's not, I know that, okay.
You bring up a good question, though, at the high school level, could we get funded for that? Because they're in, if they stay, it's, but a lot of the times, our kids come in at the elementary level, and then the parents will tend to let them just go to school in their own community as they get older.
And are there any transportation costs?
No.
To us?
It's, it's their responsibility to transport themselves.
Mr. Holden.
Just go back to Tim. I know the formula is there for the district to receive the compensation from the sending district, but does that necessarily mean the funds are sent? Thinking that the state is supposed to reimburse our special ed transportation at, like, I think a hundred percent, and I think Jen at a meeting before says, we're lucky if we're getting fifteen percent of that money. So even though it might say we're entitled to get the money, are we actually getting it? You know what I'm saying?
Well, in two areas. On the school choice, you would get, you, you get that money under school choice, it would come in on that. In regards to the transportation that she was talking about was the homeless transportation that we, they, they promised us at one point we were gonna get a full amount, and then they reduced it down by fifty-five percent, and then, and then it's gone.
We're not, but on, in writing, we're getting it.
Right, but on circuit breaker, you would get seventy-five, what is it, seventy-five percent?
I thought they were getting it in writing for transportation.
No, it was bill pass.
We, we did at one point, but not, but not last.
We only received it one year.
But you're right, two years ago, there was a big bill.
It's supposed to be getting a hundred percent.
But in circuit breaker, you would get, if, if that child requires services that qualify under circuit breaker, then we would be reporting that, and we would get whatever the total reimbursement value is. And on circuit breaker, the majority of the time, it's about seven, between seventy to seventy-five percent of the tuition cost itself.
Mrs. Polino.
How many students are here out of district because their parents teach here? And how's that affecting our class size? We've, we've talked so much about class size and reducing class size so it can be more effective in class.
I would have to take a look at the numbers on that. I think at the elementary level, it's very little.
That's very low, I don't think it's that many, to be honest.
But, and, and I don't really, I'm not sure how many there are at the middle or high school level at all, but I know at the elementary level, you're talking about maybe, geez, I, I'd say probably on a hand. You know, I could probably do it in a hand, but I would, I will check that out.
And their districts are paying?
No, 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 they come to school here. If they come, they, when you say their districts are paying, oh, you mean because their child is, their child is coming to school here, that we should be getting something from their district to our district, you know, under the school choice? Or not school choice?
Because we don't have an open-ed school choice. So why don't we have an open-ed school choice for those grades? Because we're worried about class size? Okay.
So it's a, it's a good, it is a good loophole we should take a look at. If we have students that, from the parents that are coming to school here...
Why aren't they paying?
That, then, then, well, it's not, the, the district would have to pay.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, not, not the teacher, but that's a very good point.
Because they're a taxpayer and that just, I just don't think they want to open up school choice to the elementary. Because of class size, but now we're allowing kids to come in as a fringe benefit.
Well, that's a negotiable, you know, that's something that was in the contract, so that's...
That was in the contract?
That's, that's, that's part of the contract, so.
Just a clarification on that also, that both districts have to be enrolled in school choice. So in other words, Saugus does not have school choice. So if, if a teacher came from Saugus and had kids, they, you, they couldn't go to Winthrop. So it's, it's just a straight perk.
But we don't even have it open for elementary. We just have it open for high school, so we wouldn't even get it.
As you said, it was part of the contract.
Right.
Thank you. Next is review of policy language.
So I have, I've put in, as you know, well, next year, we're going back to the coordinated program review, and Mr. Woods and Ms. O'Connell are working on various areas. And Mr. Woods has put together language that we believe needs to be in, updated in all our policies. So we'd like to refer this item to the policy subcommittee so that we could get this to move ASAP, which is the self-assessment corrective actions. It's, this is language that we want to have for the post and on our letterheads that go out in regards to civil rights. And what basically was missing is like the word homelessness. That was one of the key words that needed to be added into it, so, to update it. So I'd like to see if someone could refer this over to...
I don't think any members have that.
Oh, you don't, this?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is in the packet.
It's in the packet.
I apologize, that is in the packet.
What's, well, just if I can just speak real quickly on it. About halfway down, it says in the quotes, "All students regardless of race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, or homelessness have equal access to," et cetera, et cetera. That's the language taken directly from the current DESE, and I just thought it would, it would behoove us to have that as our language wherever policy or programmatically it falls. I looked it up on, I went through the entire school committee policy book electronically. I didn't do it by hand, I did it electronically with a search for the word, you know, gender, and I found anywhere that that application was, so that's what that list is all about. There may be more. If there are, then I would suggest we change that also. And then the bottom, I spoke about this with Mr. Moser, I just think that, when we talked with the principals and the athletic director already, I think that our footer in all of our official Winthrop Public Schools communications needs to contain that phrase. And I worked this out with Mr. Chara. It would say, "The Winthrop Public Schools does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, sexual orientation, national origin, age, gender, disability, or homelessness for employment, participation in, admission, access to, or operation and administration of any educational program activity in the school district." I think that just in most places now, just lives in the footer permanently on all communications. And I think it covers us, if you look through the civil rights portion of the coordinated program review, so many of it, so many places, it just asks, are parents aware that, you know, they're discriminating, of all the discrimination laws? I think that covers us. Just like I read the bottom of your school committee agenda tonight, and there's that footer that says that the chairman holds the right to, now, whether or not you ever really use that or not, fine, but if it's there, and I think if we put this in, this would, this would cover us in an awful lot of circumstances. So that's, that's why we're recommending it's done.
Is there a recommendation to move this to the policy subcommittee? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by President Gill. Any discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
And can I say how important this is to have part of our school's systems policy so that, as Frank said, it can be referred to and addressed or implemented wherever it needs to be done? And I thank you for putting that forward.
I think one of the things we talked about with the principals, too, and I will work with, and I'd like to sit down actually with, with council and actually discuss, because the question came up from some of the principals, just what pieces of communication should this be on and should it not be on? And I think a clarification, I mean, you don't want to obviously put it on, you know,
Everything.
You don't want to print it on every piece of paper, but I think if it's a, if it's an application to play sports, or be part of drama, or music, or a newsletter, you know, anything going home to parents and or students, both programs, it absolutely should be part of.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Any other new business? Any public comment?
I have, oh, public relations, sorry. No, sorry, okay.
No public comments?
No.
Public relations. Mrs. Polino.
No, thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
No, not tonight, thanks.
Okay. Town council president, Mr. Peter Gill. Where are they at? Mrs. Sharkey.
Yes, I do. I just would like to acknowledge that one of our past kindergarten teachers, past last week, Ella Westling. Ella was a teacher in our school system for twenty-five years, and as I said, she was a wonderful, wonderful kindergarten teacher. She loved teaching, but she also loved playing with her kids. And I was, two of my three children had Ella. And I can just tell you, there was, one of my girls had a school phobia and didn't want to go to school, and she was going to one school in the morning and, you know, and going to kindergarten in the afternoon. And of course, needless to say, it was running havoc in her home, how to keep the little one quiet and contented. So finally Ella said to me, Mary Alice, listen, you should just choose one school or the other. Don't have her mopping back and forth from two schools. If it's the preschool, have her go to preschool, and then she'll make up for it, don't worry. And it just seemed like it just made everything fall away. So she was very practical. And I believe that Ella also had eight children of her own, and she was gracious. She was a lovely lady. And I know that her family will dearly, dearly miss her. And I just wish them the very best, and my condolences to the whole family.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Mr. Holden?
All set.
Anything else? Mrs. Polino.
I just have one question, I'm sorry. I don't think we ever discussed what the final result of school choice was tonight. Are we gonna wait for Jen O'Connell to come and discuss it with us before we vote it?
Yes.
So what happens right now? When do we need that decision by for the kids who are already in school choice?
Well, the kids who are in school choice, regardless of whether you did school choice or not, their grandfather did.
So we would need it for the next, okay. Thank you.
Once you're here, you stay here, is that correct? You don't go back into the lottery?
That's what they say.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sharkey. Start a discussion about adjournment. Any questions?
Let's go enjoy this beautiful night. That's my discussion.
Still light outside. We'll vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous, we are adjourned.